Those who wish to address the board may complete a speaker card and present it to the superintendent secretary. The board president shall recognize individuals who wish to speak. Individuals wishing to present testimony to the board concerning specific items on the agenda may do so once that item has been moved, seconded, and is on the floor for discussion. Time limits of three minutes per person and 20 minutes per item shall be allowed, and board members may ask questions for clarification purposes. However, no action may be taken and no discussion may take place on an item not on the posted agenda for the Brown Act. So with that, are there any comments from the audience?
Yes, we do have two requests to speak this evening. The first is from Kristin Welsh. Please come to the podium. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. So the request that I submitted is for a topic that is not on the agenda. Is that going to be an issue or?
No, that's fine. This will be the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So my name is Kristin. I am a parent of two children, one who is a former Lancaster School District student and a current fourth grader at Nancy Corey Elementary. I do understand that the nature of this particular meeting is to kind of go over the superintendent stuff, so my topic is a little off subject. However, after contacting the district office today, I was informed that this topic will also not be, not only included this evening, but also won't be included, from what I understand, in future meetings, basically because I guess that the mandates are kind of, what I was told by Paula verbatim was that your hands are tied and that they're going to go ahead and be implemented anyways. And I just had some concerns about that. We did have other schools in the district, or not in the district, I'm sorry, in the area invite the audience of their community and parents and things like that to kind of give feedback and discuss this in a more open and transparent way. Paula told me that this was basically sent out in email. I did not receive that correspondence. I checked Peachjar. I checked any emails from Lancaster School District. I also checked to see if Nancy Corey themselves had sent me anything. And to be perfectly honest, if I wasn't doing my own due diligence in regard to these new implementation of these new mandates for the students, I wouldn't have heard about this until my child physically came home and told me yesterday afternoon that her teacher let her know that she was, which I also am confused about, the teacher told my student that she was going to have to wear a mask if she was outdoors with any students two or more to a group. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that or if Nancy Corey is kind of just making rolls as they go, but I'm very confused with that. I understand that this was supposed to be just an outdoor thing, as long as there's social distancing, which I think is insane, but then they can forego the mask, basically. I also understand that there was a certain timeline to have that implemented. It's just kind of happening immediately. Like I said, no parental feedback, no community feedback. And from what I understand, this isn't even going to be discussed. And I think that it's a very important topic, not to detract from like the superintendent stuff, but this needs to be discussed. This should have been on your agenda. I don't understand. I don't know if you guys just don't think this is important, but I do. I think this is very important. I also want to know what your guys' policy is going to be for students that refuse to wear a mask outside. Like, what are their consequences going to be? And are we going to come up with some kind of alternate physical education program for them? Because I do understand they have to have a certain number of hours to get PE credits. So what are we going to do to help these students? My student will not be wearing this mask. You guys are lucky that she wears it indoors right now. Like, these are unnecessary here, but we've got to deal with this, right? I also called Catherine Barger's office today before calling the school district, and I was informed that this is going to come down to each individual district and school implementing this and told me I should address this concern at the next school board meeting. So that's what I'm doing. I just want to make it very clear that myself as a parent, and I know many in the community would agree, that we need more transparency. We would like this stuff to be discussed. And I think it's a little disappointing that other schools in the Antelope Valley were given the opportunity to do so. And I basically came here alone. And the only way I even realized that this was even going on is because I did my due diligence and I was not informed by the school in any manner that this was going to happen. Going back to the superintendent thing, I just want to also voice that I hope whatever criteria you guys come up with that our future superintendent would frown upon that lack of communication with the community and parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can assure you that we have received new guidance from the county office, Los Angeles County Office Department of Public Health that provides some very clear and direct guidelines about the masking mandates.
Guidelines, right, not laws.
Well, actually, they have mandates that are directives that we have to follow. They do have some guidelines, and then they have some very specific directives. But we will make sure I will get with our safety folks and we will get some more communication out to families immediately.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so that is clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have another comment My phone face ID doesn't recognize me with my mask, so just give me a minute. Okay, our next comment is from Gina Whipple, President of TOW. And her comment reads as follows. "I would like to wish everyone a safe and happy new year and share that we look forward to getting back into the routine of school. We have all worked hard to build relationships, create welcoming environments, and support our students and their families. We ask that patience and grace be extended as we work through this ongoing unfortunate circumstance." That concludes her comment from TOW. And there are no further requests for speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your input. And just for information, we have had discussions on the masks requirements in previous board meetings. And these are new mandates that have just come out from LA County due to the recent surge in the Omicron virus. So we will get information out as quickly as we can. We just have been receiving that just ourselves from LA County. So, but thank you for letting us know about your concerns and definitely will keep you updated. Thank you. Okay, next we have our presentations, requests, proposals, and reports. And we have the impact of the 2020 census data on trustee area map population balance by Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost.
And we are pleased to have Mr. Peter Fagan himself here with us this evening to share information with the board regarding the census data and Lancaster School District. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll do the...
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I won't hide the lead here. I'm here with good news about the census review. I do have a brief presentation regarding the California Voting Rights Act for those of you who maybe weren't here back in 2015 when the district converted to bi-trusty area elections or members of the public who may be watching this online. So we'll get right into that. The California Voting Rights Act was adopted 19 years ago. And as you can see from that italicized part, most public agencies had at-large elections at that time. And the California Voting Rights Act said that those were not allowed, basically prohibited them if members of protected classes were somehow impaired from electing the candidates of their choice. So since January of 2003, a large percentage of public agencies and many, many school districts have converted to what is called bi-trusty area elections. And the reason for that is the bi-trusty area elections are the only safe harbor that the California Legislature put into law. There are other types of elections, but this is the only one where a public agency like a school district can be protected from potential liability from claims is to convert to a bi-trusty area elections system and then hold an election under that system. And that is what was done here in Lancaster. And I recognize several of you that were here at that time when we went through this process. And in a bi-trusty area election, the registered voters within a trustee area are the only ones that vote, and they are the ones that elect the board member to represent that particular area. This was the map that was adopted back in 2015. And you may remember, you may not, but when you converted to bi-trusty area elections, I know that we specifically mentioned that every 10 years, or decennial years, basically, every 10 years when there is a federal census, you will have to take a look at the maps and the population within the trustee areas to make sure that the maps are still legally compliant with the law. And particularly, based on the census, the main factor that we, your criteria we consider post-census is the total population within a trustee area. And the total population within all five trustee areas has to be as equal as practicable as the way the law reads. But then there is a variance of up to 10% that is allowed. So this is the map that was adopted in 2015. We've now had the census, even though it was delayed. The information finally came out. And the deadline for this board now looking at your census data and adopting either a new map or re-adopting the old map is by the end of February. So it has to be done by March 1st. And here's the good news that I wanted to lead with. If the population has not changed significantly and the trustee areas remain in compliance, then you don't have to make any changes. All you have to do is re-adopt the old map. You pass a resolution that says we are going to continue with the existing map. You submit it to the County Committee on School District Organization and the Registrar of Voters, and you're off and running for another 10 years. And here is the data. And you can see in the lower right-hand corner, the green part, the variance is 6.46%, still well within the 10% variance that's allowed. And so that's really all this is about. You, I believe you have a resolution that was attached to your agenda that in order to complete this process, what you will need to do is approve the resolution, re-adopting the current map, and then submit that to the County Committee on School District Organization and the County Registrar of Voters, and you will be good to go. So are there any questions or concerns? Yes?
So my question is, in 2030 or '32, when we look at this again, will we be looking at 10% variance from the original map or 10% variance from this map?
Okay, the variance is not a variance from a particular map. The variance is a difference between the trustee areas. So that, the comparison, you can have no more than a 10% variance in the population between the trustee areas. So, and that, you look at the census data every 10 years, and the population in the trustee areas will be different, but it still has to be within 10%. You may have a development that goes into trustee area one that bumps that population up, and people move out of trustee area four. And the variance could go from six point, whatever it is, 6% up to 12%. And it, and it's, the variance is not from a particular map. It's the variance of the population numbers in those trustee areas at the time of the census.
So between, between the areas, but that looks at a population total. When we originally did the maps, we were looking at also the demographic breakdown. So where, where does that fit?
Okay, when you looked at the demographic breakdown, when you adopted the maps and made the transition to bi-trusty area elections, the whole purpose of the California Voting Rights Act was to enhance the voting power of protected classes. And so in that case, the, there was a particular focus on making sure that you either enhanced or if possible, created even a majority-minority population in a district. This year, that is still a factor that's considered, and there wasn't significant change in population at all. And so the variance is still fine, and the enhancing of protected class voting rights is still met by the current map. So let's, to take your example or your question and turn it into an example. Say a large minority population moved into a particular trustee area, but it kind of spilled over into two areas. And 10 years from now, we'd take a look at that. And because it was split between two areas, they still didn't have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice, so long as the other factors, which are communities of interest, natural barriers, the kinds of things that you take into consideration when creating boundaries. If you, if those could be redrawn to enhance that group's voting influence, then you could do that at the next go-round with the map. But that did not happen here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? I guess that just goes to show how great of a job they did when they made the original map with such low variance after 10 years. That's great. So glad to see that.
Shows stable population as well.
Good to see that. We like, we like the students, a lot of them. With that, we are going to vote to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The trustee area map population balance as presented?
Actually, actually, that is item 7A. So we just need you to go ahead and read that agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so item 7A, the adoption of resolution 2021-22-14, approving and re-adopting the trustee area plan following the release of the 2020 census data. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
Moved by Keith Giles, seconded by Dwayne Nguyen. Any discussion, further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Okay, great presentation. And with that, we are going to recess to study session at 5:25. Moved by Dwayne Nguyen.
Second.
Seconded by Keith Giles. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And with that, we're going to let leadership associates go ahead and run the meeting, and we appreciate you being here and helping us out with this.
Well, it's good to be here, and the weather's a heck of a lot better than the last time we were here. And we actually have our whole team here, and I want to give them a chance to introduce themselves because we're all going to be working together on this. But we have a, we have pretty much on your, on your study session, your comments, but there's some other pieces, more fine-tuned stuff that we're going to go through, which we have an initial, initial meeting discussion items that will be actually going off that. We'll give you some input about some of the things that have already taken place. So we have Blanca and David that are here today, and I'll let them figure out who we'd like. Are you going to speak from there? Oh, there's no camera, I don't think, over here. So why don't you guys come up here?
This is the problem about following Fred. Hello, I'm Blanca Cavazos, and I am new to leadership associates, but I've had a lot of experience from the K-12 and university level. I've been, I've taught elementary, I've taught high school. I've been an administrator at adult school, high school. And last, my last, and also, I should say, and at the county office of ed, Kern County Superintendent of Schools Office specifically. And then my last role was as Superintendent of the Taft Union High School District. And I just finished that, actually, my last day was the 31st of December. So I'm recently retired, and I'm very, very happy to be able to work with you and with these fine gentlemen, because I think you're conducting the most important task before you. So, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. David Verdugo. I've been a partner now with leadership associates for approximately the last eight years. Retired superintendent from Paramount Unified School District in Los Angeles County, a very urban school district of about 16,000 students. Former deputy superintendent of schools in Placentor Belinda in Orange County. About 45 years as an educator. And also, when, upon retirement, I became the executive director of CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents. And then also did work in Washington DC for ALAS, where I mentored and coached aspiring superintendents across the nation. Thank you.
You know, we've been at a lot of board meetings, and we've never had the expertise that's been, you know, from the first meeting even to this one, as for the presenters to help you, help us deal with it. I just wanted to make that comment. Okay, we're going to go through the, through most of these on the initial meeting discussion items. And last time, we talked about what the actual process was. And you approved a contract, so we're a little bit out of sync for how things work, but we're going to, and it's in a good, good way that it's out of sync because we're on a jumpstart for it. But this is the first phase for us to start community input. And we start with you, and then we will talk a little bit later on one of these, on these bullets about what's, what's in store in terms of a survey and all these other things. There's a little bit of bookkeeping on our end. We usually have the board designate a liaison or spokesperson, and it could be two people in case we have, just want to have a conversation because we don't want to be violating the Brown Act, but we, if we need to talk to somebody. So usually the president or vice president and/or vice president are responsible for that. But it would be good if we had a little bit of a direction from you at this time. You can tell us who you think should be, or if you have some questions about what that would mean.
Greg, do you have any input?
Is that usually a board member or is it usually a staff person?
Oh, no, it's, it's board, it's usually the president and vice president or clerk.
Okay.
So that's how it usually is, but we won't be that bold and say what it should be. You guys will tell us what that should be.
That's fine. If that's what's normal, if you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that if that works.
There won't be a lot of pressure, just if we need some, we want to communicate or give updates or something like that, we'll, we'll deal with this on that part.
Good.
Thank you. So we've got that taken care of. We know that Jerry has received guidelines and templates because we wouldn't be as far as we are. So our side of the organization's working with her. We already have your email addresses. And then the next part of this thing is, is we are going to be discussing, who do you want us to talk to or make sure that we talk to in terms of your community groups? So we're on number five of the, of the sheet. And we've already started, we, we started this because we're actually going to start talking on Thursday, Friday, and next Tuesday. And so we've already started dealing with district staff. We've got time. And so we've already started dealing with district staff, we've got time slots, which we will be WebEx-ing to, with staff to do that, and what we don't have, is there any kinds of groups that you want us to deal with? There's a, there's a list of them, possible ones, and each district's different. Sometimes, some of the electeds, you know, the board will want some of the electeds involved with this. You know, David and I just got finished doing Santa Maria Benita Elementary District, where we talked to the community college president, that they, that they had actually a relationship with the elementary district, the high school district, and the community college, around school to career, which is really pretty cool. But there may be some, some people on that list that you want us to target, and we've said it so that we can, you know, give enough time for them to get to it, but we have a number of slots that are still open, and Jerry's been doing that for us. So is, are there any groups that you want us to, when you look at that list, or if there's some, something not on that list that you want us to reach out to?
It's very important to me that the information that we give our students translates well at high school level, so I would really like to see more than the superintendent of high school district, sorry, getting feedback on myself. I'd like to see more than just the superintendent of the high school district, perhaps the direct, superintendent of curriculum, and a board member or two, to give us some perspective on how well-prepared our students are going in to the high school district.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that's very important with the high school, because all our schools feed into their, the high school here, high school district, and also, I would like to open it up to local business members, particularly some of the businesses work closely with our elementary schools, like Fulton and Alsbury and Jack Northrop, so maybe a session that would open it up to business members in the community.
Do you have an organization or a group of, of those people that are organized, that they have some sort of, I mean, a lot, sometimes CTE drives some things, and so there's a number of businesses that come in, or do you want us, are there some very, there's some very specific, thank you, are there, other than those two organizations, are there other, other ones that you would like for us to talk to?
We could probably check with each school site, and maybe put together a list of any businesses that have been working closely with them.
Okay.
And then maybe open up to the local Chamber of Commerce also.
Yeah, that's fairly common. The, the part that's interesting is we are going to give up people the opportunity to meet with us, but there's a survey that's going out, and with COVID and all the, I mean, we're, when we're doing it, we're doing it through WebEx, but there's some people who will still elect to deal with the survey. So we give opportunities, and if they, if people participate, that's cool, if they don't, then that's, that's okay too, but we, we find that most people will be using the survey, we'll talk about that in just a second. Are there any other groups that you want us to target?
Yes, good evening. I know you have service club representatives, and you show Rotary and Kiwanis. I'd also really like to get the input from the Antelope Valley Partners for Health. They are a portion of the district, yet they are a community-minded organization that provides a lot of work to the, to the community, and I believe it was set up, and I'd have to put that to Greg and Keith and Diane, by, during Michelle's term. And that's why I think it's very important for that group, along with the Kiwanis and Rotary, to be interviewed.
Okay.
I don't believe there's a Kiwanis club in Lancaster. There are three Rotary clubs, but I agree with you on the, especially the, the business partners that have been helpful with the Monovista Magnet Site and Fulton and Alsbury.
And I would go one, one further, I would include Desert, Desert Haven, who's part of the community that we do a lot of work for, and Grace Resource Center, which we do a lot of interaction with, so I think those three groups, community-wise, would be very important.
Do you, you know, when we were talking about superintendents, because we are gonna invite the surrounding superintendents, but we'll specialize with the high school district, do you have a concern or a desire to have the county superintendent give some feedback? I mean, it is, it's gonna be done through webinar or WebEx, so I mean, it's not hard to give people that opportunity, would that be, would that be significant?
The county office of education?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
They were the ones who awarded our superintendent, superintendent of the year last year, so they're very familiar with us.
I sort of brought that up for that reason, so that's okay. Okay. Okay, is, are there any, so we're, we're good with the list, and, and giving invitations to those people, and then we, at the same time, when we put this out, we also let them know they have the opportunity to do the survey, so they have multiple ways. And the other part, you're gonna actually, what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna treat you like a regular group, and you'll get a chance to see what all these other groups are gonna be going like, this, based at the end of this, our talk today, in an open session. Okay?
How about an individual school offering the opportunity for all parents at one school to be able to give some input, as, as opposed to the, the parent leaders? Parents have different points of capacity to be involved, and I'd like to see a few more opportunities for parents to have some chance for input. Another major area that I would like to focus on, I know Dwayne mentioned Grace Resources, and they have been extremely helpful in identifying our homeless population students, but our foster youth is extremely high, and I think we need some representatives from the county to discuss that, maybe from the board supervisor's office.
Okay. Okay. Let's see here, so what we're going to be doing, as we talked about the last time, is we will take all of this information and create a profile that you guys will approve, and we will advertise to the world, and we'll let people know how they match up for what, what you're looking at, between this and all the community input, so we will put all this stuff together. One of the pieces is that there's a narrative about the, about this district, and what we usually do is take that off the website, and plug it into this, to the position profile that we have. Sometimes, board members are surprised at what's on the website, because, you know, there's one district that had two schools that were added that never got adjusted to the, to the, to the actual change in the website. So you'll get a chance to look at that, and, and we'll, we'll run it up the flagpole with a bunch of people too, but again, we're checking and balancing all of this stuff, I just wanted to let you know that, there's a section on that part, but. And then we'll have a process that, this isn't going out unless you guys say it's okay, so we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to look at it, and give feedback, and we'll do it so we don't violate a Brown Act, so we'll, we'll have that process as well. And then it'll be posted, when this profile gets posted, gets completed, it'll be on your district website as well as ours, so it'll be, and everybody who applies will get a chance to see that, and that's what we talk about with the, with each of these candidates, to let them know this is what it is, and we sort of translate, because this process is really good for us to learn about the district. I said the last time, it was really good for me to hear about your budget, the enrollment changes, hear a presentation about a school, look around here, so I've, I've actually started a cheat sheet and learning a lot about you, plus the work that we did at Antelope Valley High School District too, helped us get a piece of the, the piece of the district. So we've actually already started the online survey, and it's, it's posted on your website. We have English and Spanish that's available. As of yesterday, keeping in mind you didn't come to school until the 10th, you have 176 people that have replied, and you have two in Spanish. So we have another 10 days, this, this, and it closes the 20th, and we're gonna need, when we talk to principals and all the people that we're gonna start talking to, we'll remind both teachers and district staff, and, and all the businesses, and all of the Rotary folks, and Chamber of Commerce, to, to go out and spread the word. Usually, the newspapers here are so phenomenal with, with covering your district, I mean, Michelle had a great, I think it was January 6th, saying goodbye, you know, article, and that, and they, I'm pretty sure they'll cover the same things, because they did that with the high school district as well. So we just need to make sure we, we can point all, all folks to get to that, to get to the website and complete the survey. Plenty of time, and for a, for a vacation and stuff that was going on in between, especially as crazy as COVID is right now, you know, we're not, we're not surprised at the numbers, but we would expect them to be a lot higher by the 20th. And we monitor, excuse me, we monitor that, and, and if it's slow, we'll, we'll see how we can, you know, maybe have people, you know, send out more, I think peach, peach jar? Peach?
Peach jar.
Peach jar, I learned about that. So we have different ways that, within the district to communicate, so we'll, we'll work with staff to be able to get to that part of it. Okay, we're going in number six, you, you approved the timeline the last time, and we are hitting on the 24th and the 31st with an access publication in edcal, and we're, we're set to do that. We've, we've already established the 13th, and the 14th, and the 18th for community input, and we're, we're, we're gonna finalize that as of today, so we haven't, we have spaces for that. On the 8th of March, we have the closed session for you to review the applications, so we will pull all that stuff, and that'll be an input, or we'll, we'll send that to you electronically, and we'll also send you a hard copy. We've set interviews for the 24th and the 25th of March, and we can figure out if it's one or two days when we get to that point on the 8th. There's a validation process that the board, we don't need to talk about it now, but there is an opportunity for you to go out, or it probably may be by Zoom nowadays, to be able to talk to people in the district for the finalists, if you want to do that. And then the, we've backward mapped, as you can recall, April 5th is the, is your board meeting, that we hopefully will have, you'll have a contract squared away, and be able to prove it on that date, with a starting time on July 1. Okay, is there any questions about this? I know that's a quick review of what we did last time, but more or less, just kind of putting it into the, into the flow here. So even though it hasn't hit edcal, this, this job, and not very many people know about it, we put it on our website, and we already had 13 people that have requested an application, which is a little scary, because they don't know what they're applying for, right? But they're interested in this district, and they're, and they know quite a bit about it, so that, that part's good. There's a worksheet, before we get into the part, we will want to make sure that the candidates can, we'll talk about what their contract parameters are, and so we'll, we're gonna need a copy of, of Michelle's contract, so, and we'll work through that to get that part of it, and, and just kind of get an idea of what it is, so when we talk to people, you know, we, we're sort of, you know, if somebody wants to have a million-dollar contract, I have a feeling that's not gonna apply here, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I don't think I'm wrong. So we want to make sure it's aligned with that part of it. Do you have any questions at this moment? Because we're, the next thing we're about ready to do, and David's gonna be facilitating this while I go and take notes, but, but do you have any questions up to this point?
I do, Fred. When we send the current superintendent contract, does that go to the candidates?
No, it goes to us.
Okay.
So that we have an idea of what you've had, and the other part that's gonna happen is that you're going to need, because there's, I'm sure, things that have changed 10 years in the, in the, since the contract was initially developed, that you'll want to make sure you, you work with your attorney on the front end of this, so there's a template. We will, the, the contract parameters are some basic comments, like, you know, salary, work schedule, you know, I mean, if any organizations or anything like that, that would be, that they would list that, and then if this all gets approved, you'll have this basic template that your attorney has worked with, and then you just plug the stuff into it, and then they, you guys would approve it, you give it to the candidate, at the time when we, when we actually get to the point of being able to say that you're the finalist, and then you're, you're all set to go when the time comes. So they can, they, you want them to say yes before we go too far, but if they get this far, they're gonna say yes, because we, we're not gonna bring somebody that's not alike. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so David, David now is gonna come up here, is going to come up here, and, and I'm gonna be taking notes. My typing skills are, are okay, but if you go too fast, I will need to help you slow down, and I'm gonna try to keep up with you. Okay, thank you, Fred.
Perfect, thank you. Well, again, thank you, board members, for the opportunity to work with you, and we'd like to also thank Jerry, and I believe it's Brandon, Brandon, or his assistants as well, they've been kind of behind the scenes doing a lot of work for us, so we truly do appreciate that. And I would add, and I know Fred may have spoken about this previously, the clerical assistance that we have on our end as well, the administrative assistance, but thank you very much. At this point in time, it's where we would like to provide the opportunity for the trustees to provide input directly to us on the desired qualities, the characteristics, and the experiential background that you'd like to see in your next superintendent. There are basically three bullets or three questions, that being the first, those desired qualities, characteristics, and traits. The second is the district strengths and challenges, and then, of course, I should have said, district strengths would be number two, district challenges would be number three. And this is particularly important for that match and fit that Fred spoke about. That profile, that position description really will guide us. You may have, as Fred mentioned, already have people that are interested in finding out more about the position. What we haven't done, of course, yet, is the position description, which would describe more specifically the desired traits and characteristics. You may have, for example, someone who's a site principal in a district outside of this immediate area. Typically, and theoretically, that person would not be a match and a fit for a superintendent's position, but nevertheless, they've applied, and we try to provide them some insight and background into that match and fit. With regards to what you desire in a superintendent, what might be helpful is to start off the sentence just mentally with, "We desire a superintendent who," and then those characteristics Fred will capture. So for example, in the personal side, we might desire a superintendent who has a sense of humor, who has displayed integrity. On the professional side, it might be someone who has experience in a school district with similar demographics, for example, someone who's a visible leader, someone who's had cabinet experience. These are just examples that I'm providing you at this stage, or at this point, to try to get the, the juices flowing here a little bit. But with that, let's stick with the characteristics and the traits, those experience that you desire, and Fred will be capturing them. And if I may, may I start with Diane?
Okay. I think first and foremost, we desire a superintendent who understands the nature of families, and what it takes to motivate family engagement in the education process.
Absolutely, and if I may, we'll just go to Keith, and then we'll circle back. Outstanding, thank you.
That one's really good, I didn't hear you mention communicator, a really good communicator. We've had that.
Absolutely, very critical. Greg?
And are we just keeping this to like a, a bullet point? Because I got quite a few, but you just want the main one at this point?
No, whatever you have on your mind and in your heart, that's gonna be important for us to capture.
Okay, so I think the main thing is, is although we are a large district, I think we've been able to have a kind of a small district feel and a family orientation feel, so I think the main thing would be a people person, and being a lot, a large district, I think it's important to have a lot of visibility at the school sites, to make them feel part of the whole district, and welcome, and, and motivate them, you know, to do their best. of the whole district and welcome and, and motivate them, you know, to do their best. Also, I think we have some, some good programs going on that we'd like to see continued and expanded. One of those is our virtual academy, which has grown incredibly during this time. And another one is our bilingual program, which we'd like to see another site opened up. We have one on the east side, we would like to see another one open up on the west side. And also we have our Fulton and Alsberry and our different magnet programs at different school sites. So those are very important to keep the community engagement with those and expand those programs as well. And as Diane mentioned, engaging the families, I think, is extremely important at this time. So a lot of different things that come into mind, but I think they're all important.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Yeah, one thing again, would be transparency to stakeholders. That's been questions that sometimes, and I'd really like to make sure that our candidate has some proof, I guess, of a background with transparency. Definitely, Michelle was not always an educator. She worked for the Teamsters and she has a strong background in negotiative skills necessary to deal with the most important part of our district, most of the teachers who teach our children and also the CSU employees, the employees who, without the schools and the district office and everything else would fall on its face. So I think transparency and, and having a background with, other than just education, is very important. Thank you.
And folks, you're off to a great start. Some of these common themes that you're talking about, we often hear, but we certainly want to be as comprehensive as possible. Going back to Diane, if I may.
How's our typist doing? Is he able to keep up with us? I, I got to tell you, we know exactly what we want. We, we are, we, what we don't know is we, we don't know what our community really wants and what they need. And so this process is extremely valuable for us. One of the things that I have found helpful in meeting people who become engaged in, in the entire community is, is examples of leadership in non-education related activities, community service, community leadership, a passion for something other than just education, because I feel that it gives, it gives other people a way to engage with that superintendent. I have a business background and I have found that that has been extremely important. I also have a nonprofit background and those insights that I can provide at times are, are very helpful. So someone who's had a career in education from the day they got out of college is fantastic if they have some of those other components, because I think that adds to a very well-rounded individual who can talk to all kinds of people.
Correct. Thank you. Continue it on.
Honesty and integrity, a strong leader that's honest and I think, kind of mentioned it with transparency, but always honesty and integrity is always important.
Yes, sir. Greg?
Yeah, I would say a vision for the future. I think Michelle was very good at taking our ideas and ideas from the staff and, and parents and having, building a vision with that and, and really hoping it come to fruition. A good example is our, our boardroom here, you know, that's part of, you know, the work that she's done and the staff has done and so forth. So I think something that would be neat would be kind of take it to the next level. See how we can incorporate this building, this site with the community and build our presence and, and help build our image even more, you know, with more awareness of what we can do and what the kids can do.
Outstanding. Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
We have a lot of good, good things already down here. I think what the superintendent would, that we would like to see would be collaboration with the board on, and, and most importantly, her cabinet or their cabinet, to identify for the board, the positive nature of, what do we call them, the, the, all the different programs that we're taking on. So I'd just like to see a lot more collaboration with board, cabinet and, and the, are the superintendent.
Very critical. I was very lucky as a superintendent, I had a wonderful Board of Education. It was the closest thing to a marriage that I ever encountered and I've been married for 50 years, so. But it is, it's that relationship that makes a difference in leadership and moving forward as a team. Other things that come to mind?
I'd like someone with some creativity. We've been very blessed with our previous superintendents who would think outside the box and try something new and sometimes it doesn't always work, but the, the effect of trying and, and putting a different spin on it than what you're going to get at the next city or town or, or, or state. I also like someone who has the national picture very firmly in mind, understanding the trends and helping us as board members research those and become familiar with them more before they become an explosive dialogue. I really appreciate that. I also desire very much in a superintendent, someone who can develop pride within our own community for our schools. I, I think that folks don't realize what an asset we are and what we're, what opportunities we're actually giving our community as well as our students. And I'd like that pride to be developed.
Excellent point. Thank you. Keith, any others?
Sense of humor. I know you mentioned it, but always important to be able to have a sense of humor when things are like they are now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Greg?
I know there's a lot of different things. I think one of them we have to keep focused on too is the basics, reading, writing and arithmetic and someone who can keep academics at the forefront and help us reach the goal of, of improving student scores each year. I know it's, it's a difficult thing, so that's something we want to keep focused on too.
Absolutely. Critical. And Mr. Wynn?
Continue the, I'd like the superintendent to continue searching for our best teachers. We have, we have that now with our assistant superintendent, Lexi Conti. But what we need is that to continue, we, we need people to go out, talk to these likely candidates and make sure that we get them here, because we need them very badly.
Correct. Now, that recruitment and retention is really very critical. Anything else that the board might add? Please.
I'm not done yet.
No, no, please.
One of the blessings that we've had with Michelle is that she is able to have a very frank discussion with each one of us individually or as a board and is not afraid to veer away from a, an awkward topic. We have a social contract that we developed. We have very specific strategies that, you know, I would loved it when our budget was built around some of these strategies and, and they go hand in hand with each other. But that frank discussion, that is a swift discussion to try to address an issue before it explodes, because we have certainly seen that. I'd also like to see a superintendent that can find new ways to develop art and music in the different programming that we're doing. We need to have that pendulum swing back into that because it does help learning greatly.
Correct. Absolutely correct. Others, gentlemen?
I think that's good. A lot of great, great input, yeah.
I would hope that this individual also would be well-balanced, maybe even have time for a hobby or some way to relieve the stress of what this job puts on. It's, it's a big undertaking and we've, we've been very fortunate with superintendents in the past who, you know, have found that balance. And so I think that's something that you have to look for in your interviews and discussions, but I think that helps someone stay in a position longer than the traditional three years that most superintendents seem to be.
There really has been an emphasis on the leader's health and wellness.
Yes.
Very recently, so that's a wonderful and, and critical point. If, if I may, and it probably goes without saying, anything regarding fiscal experience?
Fiscal experience is absolutely essential and it is our, our board's responsibility to, number one, hire and get the best superintendent and, number two, to understand our, our fiscal health as well. There are many people that are involved with that and if someone gets down into the weeds a little bit too much, I would rather have that strong leader that keeps everyone moving forward than someone who is particularly strong in any one area. I think the attitude of understanding that our kids can succeed, that our, our babies and then our, our almost grown-up students at middle school all need something different and their families often don't know what that is and we need to be able to, you know, have a communication that, that makes it fun to be a student in our district and a pleasure to be a parent. It, it's been a very tough two years and I don't think that any of us could have expected the, the, the trauma that all of this has put through. So we need to come out of this and emerge from this with a strong leadership and I don't think a, a focus on fiscal responsibility is as essential as the leadership ability.
Right. Certainly a team effort. Okay to switch gears here for a moment. Like to ask, inquire what the trustees might be considering some of the district's strengths. We're going to next ask on challenges, which are and can be as important, but what comes to mind with respect to district strengths? We've heard a little bit about that from trustee president with regards to some of the pride, with regards to some of the programs that you've had, but what are some of the strengths? And again, thinking that this is going to become a position description where potential candidates or interested applicants are going to be reading this and getting a stronger sense about that match and fit. We often tell these individuals that they need to assess the district as much as the district might be assessing them at some point in time. But how about district strengths? And if we may, we'll start again.
I think one of the most exciting programs that we have is that our schools are able to develop an individual identity. The, we have a magnet school at Montevista that I was absolutely blown away by what those kids can do and it, and it was just something different and the parents were as fascinated as the kids were. The teachers were scrambling to catch up, that some of the kids could learn much faster, but we had consultants there to assist them with that learning. And I think that's a different type of language as well as our dual immersion programs. But having that, that flavor of a school and that, that differentiation really sets, sets a tone in our neighborhoods.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think it's our staff. We have really good staff here, which is, we have excellent people. I've never been anywhere in the district where I haven't seen excellent people. Teachers all the way, all across, whether it's the, the leadership team, teachers all the way, custodians, we all have real, maintenance, they're all really good, really good people.
I'm almost sorry that I have this mask on. I'm smiling about that and thumbs up by all means. Absolutely. Mr. President?
Yeah, I think you mentioned fiscal. I think we're real conservative as a district, so we work real hard to build a 6% reserve and we've been just real careful with our money and using our facilities wisely. So I think that'd be someone, an area to look into, someone that can use our facilities and be real conservative with the fiscal management.
It is a strength by all means. Right. Trustee Wynn?
Well, the strengths of this district are immense. We have business services, we have new, new construction, not new building construction, but remodeling going on. We have programs starting all of the time. We went to, when we came back from the first of the year, our first of schools starting in August, we came back to a virtual learning academy that jumped from 200 students to 1,200 students. So the strengths of those people in all aspects of our cabinet are great. So I think a new superintendent would be great to have some background in those kind of issues. I know that most superintendents in a district this size of 15,000 or more students, you know, it's, it's difficult to manage, but we do it very well with those that we are relying on. So the strengths are there. The challenges are just, as I've said before, just making sure that we keep transparent to all of our stakeholders.
And with that, if I may, let's flip to challenges, which may be as important as the strengths.
Could I add one?
Please.
I, I want to give a specific example of something that was unique in. And it really says a lot about the relationship between the staff and the superintendent. We had a group of folks who are now in charge of our Leadership Academy, formerly called Crossroads, which is where we had students who were struggling with behaviors as well as academics. And the staff came to the superintendent and said, we'd like to reimagine what this facility could be and how we transition our, the image of, of this unit. And it was welcomed. So I think that the staff has an opportunity to present new ideas and I want a superintendent that still has that flavor.
Absolutely. I didn't mean to take away from the strengths and jump into challenges, but let's continue with strengths.
I can't hear.
Thank you. Do you see a need with the, talking about facilities for some bond experience from, potentially? Is that, is that something that may or may not be necessary as you're talking about the characteristics you're looking for? I mean, we're talking about this facility remodeling, which may be, as described, bringing people together and redesigning stuff, but is it, is there more stuff along the lines that way?
I don't think it's an immediate need.
Yeah, I think we're on the tail end of it. I think we've, I think we're bonded out for a while.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure that we were discussing it. Thank you.
And, and Fred, you're right. And the fact that recently in the Anlo Valley, including majority in Lancaster, we've had five new hotels built, which indicates there's a lot of business being done up here. And is that business going to lead to more and more? And is that business going to lead to more and more people moving here? There are about seven different housing tracts going in Indiana Valley now. So you may be right, a person with a background in bond measures and how to run a bond campaign may be very important.
And I think that process, that master facility planning comes with the future accordingly, as you mentioned, but we often hear simply because of kind of the nature of the fiscal situation in school districts, that there's a desire to have somebody who's had bond referendum experience or has gone through the process, maybe not even as a leader, but as a facilitator of that process. But continuing with strengths, if I may, any other strengths that you'd like to share?
I know we've always had a really well and not to, you know, we've always had a really good leadership team as far as board members. We had a very stable board. We've always mostly, you know, in the long, the time I've served, we've mostly been on the same page. We've all been mostly in agreement. We may disagree on different things, but we all have serving the students' needs. So that's always been, made it nice for, I think, a lot of us and easier to be on the board.
Absolutely, and I think that's what is drawing much of the interest right now prior to the position description being generated. Is it okay now to go to challenges? And these are important simply because once we develop an executive summary for the trustees and all the board members, we would also suggest that the new superintendent, he or her, be privy to that executive summary so that they can begin to prioritize what they see as some of the challenges in conjunction with the Board of Education. But that being said, challenges that the district has or that you see on the horizon?
I think first and foremost will be identifying the gaps in knowledge that have occurred over the last year and a half and being creative in keeping the student trajectory on a forward path. I don't know if we've lost ground or not. We really haven't been able to get that information, but with a, with a community with such a high poverty level, these students don't have all of the tools that they can use to recover from something like this quickly.
Correct.
So having an understanding that that is the number one focus is catching up with that gap in learning and being able to identify where it is.
Some of the federal and state research is now indicating that there may have been as much of a two-year loss of, loss of learning, if you will, so very good point, thank you.
Well, and if it's necessary to readjust what grade a child is in, that's a huge issue to a child. So what can, what other ideas do we have to fill that, that need without overburdening and putting all the pressure on the teachers to do it, to come up with those ideas? It is, it is going to be something that our kids at this stage will suffer from probably for three to four years until there's a, some kind of a catch-up, but what can we do immediately to, to help with that?
You know, that dilemma that you're mentioning is, is pretty universal throughout the state, thank you. Going on, challenges?
Yeah, I would definitely did it what she said, just, you know, we've struggled with scores and all that stuff, but this is just compounded with the, with the pandemic and just to bring the kids back to a place of normality and, you know, academics and just life and fun, you know, school, you know, we've lost most of our fun stuff at school, just bringing that back is going to be a challenge, so.
Thank you.
I would say just different ways to keep the parents and minority groups engaged and active in the education process.
Okay. Trustee, when?
Yeah, to piggyback on Greg's comment, we started at many of our schools a parent academy, a parent college more or less, where the, the parents are brought in and taught how to be parents. And in a school district our size, with the foster children, with the homeless children, we need some things like that for the parents that are, for the guardians, the parents that are, that need those helpful hints. So, yeah, I think challenges here are foster, homeless, the dimension of which is large We just need to have somebody that has some good background in parent involvement, bringing the parents back to help, volunteerism, what kind of background would they have in volunteerism? At least that's my opinion.
Yes, sir. If I may interject, we often hear about the social emotional needs of the children at this stage as well. Please.
Yes, we've had some, some breakout sessions on that and some very focused community input on that as well, so we're very fortunate to have a very strong team working on that, also a very strong team working on the safety of our campuses. One of the things that is, you know, my red flag, my matador cape, whatever you want to call it, and that is the fact that the county knows the name of every foster student in their system, but is often not willing to share that or communicate with us, the schools, on the best way to educate that child. And if there is someone who has that passion, that maybe there needs to be an individual education plan for each foster child as well, so that they're not moved all over Los Angeles County, that they have a chance for a stable education, that kind of, of communication must be made or these, we're failing them, we're failing our foster kids. And so that obviously is a passion of mine and I would like to see us all do a better job with that and, and be given more of a communication link with the county.
I think we started the conversation with the idea that not only your mind, but your heart and what's speaking here and what's telling us. Thank you.
Was that all, did you, did you also, I think I heard it, but I'm not sure I heard it, was it foster and homeless or just foster?
Yes, we started identifying our homeless youth and were quite surprised when we put into place liaisons and information so that of how many of our children have become homeless during the course of the year. Our foster youth as well, we have a, we pretty much now know who they are, but we still have limited communications with the county and I feel that that's a great opportunity for us.
Is it county social services specifically or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice President Giles?
I can't think of anything else to add. It looks like they've got a pretty good handle on challenges.
Okay. President Tepe?
Yep, I think that's a good list of our challenges.
And trustee, when?
I'm going to go along with the rest of the board.
I've got one more.
Yes, please.
Not even a generation ago, maybe 10 years, a lot of families made an effort to have a computer in their home. With the transition to smartphone, there is now, I think, a definite gap in the technology ability and I, I think it really hurt us during the pandemic. And so having more resources for both the students and the parents to access computers is, I think, valuable for our kids' education.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimes. With that, the final bullet that I believe is appearing on your agenda item there would be just generally a question regarding the process or procedures. Dr. Van Luen had mentioned many of those as he was up here describing some of the processes and next steps, but any questions that the board might have prior to closing this portion of the meeting and entering into a closed session opportunity?
I'd just like to say we're really excited to hear the community's input on what they're looking for and it's always good to hear what the community is, is wanting our schools to do and to accomplish, so we're looking forward to that.
You look to be congratulated on that point and on that fact, allowing that opportunity to have stakeholder input is real critical. Thank you, President.
I also think you'll be a little bit surprised because there's surveys that have already come in that have mirrored a lot of the things you've said, so that's the good part too.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, what we would want to do at this stage is close the open session or public session and convene into a closed session.
Okay, and thank you for leading us through the study session. Great job and we appreciate you being here for that very much. Great job. With that, we're going to recess to a closed session at 6:28. And it looks like we don't need a vote for that, so we will go ahead and resume into closed session and we'll be back as soon as we're done. Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm going to report that no action was taken in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And do we have any closing comments or anything before we close up? Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn at 6:58. And motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries for zero. Have a great night everyone.